Councilman Pecorero is not able to be with us this evening, so I'll be filling in in his stead. And I'm sure I won't do quite the bang up job that he always does, but I'll do my, make my best effort. Copies of tonight's agenda and the entire information packet that the council will be using are available online on the city's website. And our first item of business is approval of minutes of the mayor and common council for December fourteenth of two thousand and twenty, the closed session of December fourteenth of two thousand and twenty, and the special mayor and council meeting of December twenty first of two thousand and twenty. Do I have a motion to approve all three sets of minutes?
Make them.
To approve.
Three sets.
Hey, Councilwoman Gilbert made the motion seconded by Councilman Dayhoff. And I'll call for the vote, all in favor of approving the minutes as written, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. And the ayes have it. I know that's not quite as eloquent as our esteemed president, the way he does it, but I'll leave that to him. Okay, next item of business is presentations. We're going to start this evening with a quarterly update of the Westminster Fiber Network Initiative. And we'll start, we're not going to start with Ms. Matthews because Ms. Matthews is not able to be with us this evening. So we will go right to Ms. Giavignoni, and she's our partner at Ting, so she'll be giving us that report. And of course, we have our, our Mr. Glass also online with us. So if he would like to weigh in or Mr. Dick at any point during the presentation, certainly, gentlemen, please feel free to weigh in as well. So Val, the floor is yours.
Great, thank you. Let me get my screen share going. Okay, everybody sees my Ting slides, correct? Somebody, a thumbs up? Yeah, okay, cool. All right, so we're just gonna review what quarter two looked like for the Westminster Fiber Network. Okay, phase recap, marketing review, and questions pretty quick tonight. So as you can see, we, we had some pretty great progress over the last quarter. I am ecstatic to see the pilot phase and phase one jumping over forty percent. That's pretty awesome when you think about how far we've come. That's almost one of every two houses and businesses. For phase two being at thirty percent, I think that that's another great achievement. When you look at the number of passes in phase two, I mean, it's nearly two thousand. And so, you know, thirty percent of that is phenomenal. And then, you know, phase three and phase four, which are our two younger phases, they, they continue to grow both in subscribers. And of course, phase four, you'll notice has grown in number of past premises as well due to the Stonegate community and how that keeps growing. And gosh, we're super successful in that neighborhood. And with the smart homes that D.R. Horton is building, of course, that's quite necessary. But we're, we're, we're doing well out there. I wanted to share a couple of other things with you guys while we're on this screen. So we've been having a really great success in having installs at which the city doesn't have to come out. Because all of those drops that were put in years ago, I won't, let me not exaggerate and say all of them. But a really lovely proportion of them is being installed without, you know, a couple of years later. Maybe they're out of their contract now. Maybe they don't like their new contract. You know, I don't want to make too many assumptions as to why, but I thought it was exciting to share with you that of the installs that we had in, in the last three months of two thousand and twenty, forty-six percent of them, that's forty-six percent of them were, were constructed in the ground twenty nineteen or earlier. So at least a year old, but thirty-one percent of them were constructed in twenty seventeen or over. And that's thirty-five of those drops. So it's nice to see that the money that was put into the ground several years ago is, you know, is paying off for you and that we're seeing progress there. I also wanted to share with you, just because this was the first complete quarter that we had the new packages. Remember, I announced last meeting that we had, we had gotten rid of our ten-ten product. We were upgrading our low end to a fifty-fifty and then adding in a two hundred because the community had spoken and suggested that we, that they wanted a middle tier. And so of our current customer base, ninety percent of them are home customers. But it's really awesome to see that twenty-five percent of them are fifty-fifty. So we've given that lower end a nice upgrade, and that's, that's been very well received. Only sixteen percent are the two hundred, and, and just about sixty percent are the, are the home gig, which is of course our flagship product, the one that, you know, most people desire the greatest benefit with fiber. But it's just been, it's been nice to see that we've been able to bring on another group of people with our other products. So that's enough about the numbers. I just want to share with you a little bit about what we did over the past quarter. Since we had these new plans, of course, we did lots of marketing. We did a ma, an ad in the Carol magazine, which was the first time we'd done that. Well, it'd been several years since we'd done that. We did a Carroll County Times ad again, this time a full pager. We did two electronic billboards. We did a direct mail. We have a special flyer for everybody who is a part of the Carroll County Chamber of Commerce. And we spent a lot of time connecting with old leads, all of those drops that are in the ground. I had my customer service team reach out after I sent them an email, just reminding them, you know, hey, you've got this drop at the side of your house, and there's so much excitement and so much has changed, and there's no better time than now. And then my customer service team reached out and spoke with them, and, and we, we did some good conversions, as you could tell by the numbers that I shared with you earlier about the older drops. So the new plan seemed to be successful. One of the things I do want to throw in as I talk about this campaign is, you know, because we, we all understand that there's no good way to market just to the city of Westminster for Ting. When we choose our marketing, we know that unfortunately, we're teasing some of our bordering community members. And so, you know, the Carroll County Times and the Carol magazine go all over the county. And I will say, I've seen a pretty large uptick in the number of pre-orders and interest calls from outside the city. But more specifically, people who are, you know, right along the edges, who heard about the pilot that's going to be happening and are really excited. So I pass those all to Mr. Dick to have a conversation to see if they fall into the, or they qualify rather for the pilot program. But I can say that we've definitely got some interest out there, which is, which is great. It's nice to see that people want what we have to offer. We did a Veterans Day promo over the last quarter. We did a direct mail and an ad in the Times. And we made a donation to the Carroll County Veterans Independence Project based on our subscribers. And so that was a, it felt nice. I went out one day right before the Christmas break that I got. And we, I got a nice tour of the new facility, which is great, and was able to make the donation and, and see what's going on. So it was nice to have, to be able to support the Veterans Clause with that promo. And then, you know, I've talked a lot, a lot over the past couple of years about trying to catch those who are new to town. So, you know, I keep working with the Realtor Association. We had another lunch and learn. We got to have it in person, and there were about six people there, which was great. I have attempted a ad in the New Movers Guide, which is a guide that the Carol magazine sends to the, the new addresses. Like when someone goes to register with the post office as, you know, new to town, it goes to those hoping to catch people who maybe are coming to Westminster from out of town and might not know what we have to offer. And then, of course, I had some updated information for the Realtors. So, you know, continuing to make sure that people hear what's going on before it's too late. And that's it. Questions for me?
Does anybody have any questions for Val? If not, we certainly appreciate it. It's a great presentation. Looks like things are going really well. It's nice to see how, you know, the, the oldest ones are continuing to get up into that forty percentile range and the newer ones keep climbing. So that's great news. One, I do have one question for you, Val. So you said that people are self-installing. So they're, or isn't that what you said, how they're doing the installations? Oh, no, that's not what you said.
So last quarter, I talked about the smart install. Is that what you're referring to?
Okay, yeah. What does that mean?
Well, and it, it was what we were doing in order to be able to install while the pandemic was at its height. And we were still, you know, getting things figured out. So what happened was we would drop the kit for the install off at their front step. And then we would, our technician would be on the outside and the person would be on the inside. And they communicated over the phone and, and did the install together so that the installer didn't have to enter the home. We do still offer that for people who don't want our staff members in their home, which is understandable. But we, we, we are not exclusively doing that like we had been. We still do offer the assisted install where the installer does enter the house, you know, with full precautionary measures.
That's great. Good news.
Mr. President?
Yes, Councilman Dayhoff.
May we please have a, a copy of the PowerPoint so that I can study it?
Yeah, I shared that with Shannon earlier in the week, so she has it and can, and can share that with you.
If we could have that, that would be great. Thank you very much.
My pleasure.
Okay, there are any other questions or comments before we move on? Well, Val, thanks for coming this evening, and you certainly, you certainly don't have to stay on here for the rest of the night, that's for sure. I'm sure you'd rather get back to something more exciting than listening to us talk.
Mr. President Pro Tem, I have a question.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
I think it was that first slide you had up there, Ms. Giavignoni. I just had a que, and you might not know this off the top of your head, because I don't remember. What was the, like, the lag, the gap between the phases? Because if you look at like phase one, we're at like forty percent in the pilot in phase one, and then phase two, we were at like thirty. Phase three, I think we were like right around twenty, right? So you, so it's, it's like, it's almost like in unison, except for three and four are obviously kind of bashed together there. But do you know what the gap was between?
So if you look at the last call on the anniversary dates, that is, absolutely, that is when we installed the first customer in that phase.
Okay, so, all right, so the first one was at six months and then a year. Okay, I was just curious. I didn't, I thought of the question like right when you took this down. So I didn't have the anniversary dates to look at, but thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, any other questions, comments before we move on? Okay, thanks, Val. Have a nice evening if you're taking off.
You as well.
Okay, so next item of business is the consent calendar. We have four items on the consent calendar this evening. They have a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Woman Gilbert moves. And Councilman Yingling, did you second? Thank you, sir. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any questions related to the consent calendar? And if, if not, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of approving the consent calendar, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? No opposed, consent calendar passes. Okay, next up will be a report from the mayor. Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mike, do I refer you as Mr. President right now, or is it Mr. President Pro Tem? What's the official way to handle that? I'm asking Mr. Dayhoff. If anyone, if we all know, I'm asking Mr. Dayhoff the answer to that question. He pulled his manual.
He's the, he's the acting president, so I, I mean, I, I think Mr. President is fine.
It's certainly a little easier, that's for sure.
Often, often when I talk with him, I call him sir.
Well, there was a long way of me saying that I don't have any report, because I think everything with report on is going to be covered by committee reports. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Mayor. And do we have a COVID update? I know Ms. Matthews isn't in, but Mr. Glass or Chief, do either one of you guys have anything?
Um, yes, good evening. The only thing I have is to just say that we've, Carroll County, along with the rest of the state, has started the rollout of vaccinations. So they have a tiered response plan in place based on prioritization, exposure risk, et cetera. So the first responders had the opportunity in the last week for vaccination. And then there's some of that spilling over into this week. And then they'll move through the different phases of populations based on their calculations of risks and so forth. So wanted to let you know that's underway and that the health officer has indicated that he hopes to get through the phases within the upcoming weeks. That's it.
Thank you, Chief. Okay, then we'll move on to reports from standing committees. We'll start off from the Art Council, Councilman Dayhoff.
Um, not much of a report. Mr. Glass, do we want to discuss the mural that, that we had discussed earlier? Or do you want to wait and discuss that at a later point in time?
So I was prepared to do that when we, when we talked about the, the retaining wall, but it's up to you. We can.
No, no, I, 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 Mr. Glass and I have discussed the idea of bringing forward another mural like the one we did in two thousand and two on Locust Lane, and I'm really excited about it. I think there's a number of mural opportunities in town. And of course, we're going to work very closely with the, the Carroll Arts Center on that. Mr. President, may I ask, may I ask the chief a, a question about COVID nineteen?
Well, I, I would say let's do that, Councilman Dayhoff, under council comments and discussion as opposed to your Arts Council Committee report. Is that good?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is that it, Mr. Councilman Dayhoff? Okay, we'll go, next go to Economic and Community Development Committee, Councilman Yingling.
Yeah, just something brief. As everybody on here knows, that we purchased the Stockdale property across from Johansson's. I guess it was probably about a year ago. It's the key property, the center property in entire downtown. And we had, have a agreement or contract with called Partners for Economic Solutions. They're out of Washington, DC. We had originally met with them and had some discussion. And we were really getting a lot of momentum, getting our ducks in a row and how we were, what we were going to do with the property. And that has since was put on hold due to, obviously, the pandemic. However, I'm going to be calling an economic development meeting here in the very near future, hopefully in the February, March, and get the, our consultants back together and make sure, let's see if we can't start that momentum up again to, to move forward on what we'd like to put there. I think I've shared with everybody, and I think you all kind of have agree that, and I believe Partners for Economic Solutions has looked into this, that a boutique hotel with some sort of mixed-use component would, would go nicely there. Now, look, you know, we can't say for sure that that's going to be absolutely what it is because obviously the market will dictate, you know, what, what goes there. But that, that is, I believe, what we're, we're going to hope for. So stay tuned for a report on, on that meeting, because if there's, there's one thing I want, I, I want to get, and I know all of you do too. I want that to move. I don't want that building to sit there for ten years, you know. Surely, if it has to, you know, based on the conditions of the marketplace, I understand. But I want to, I'm hoping that's not the case and that we can push forward with that. It's, it's a great opportunity to be a centerpiece of downtown, being that we own the other corner now or going to have a beautiful office building for our employees. Let's cap off that, that end and make something special. So stay tuned for that. That's all, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Yingling. Okay, next up will be the Finance Committee. Council, President Pecorero's absent, so we will not have a Finance Committee report this evening. Personnel Committee, Councilwoman Gilbert.
No comment tonight.
Okay. And Public Safety Committee, that would be me. The only comment I have is, you know, crime continues to be low. And, you know, we're still getting fantastic positive feedback consistently. I know all of you have expressed to me at some point in time about the positive feedback you've heard, you know, from the community relative to the job that, you know, the, the police department's doing. And as we see turmoil around us at times throughout the country, we can take a lot of solace knowing we have, in my opinion, you know, as fine a police department as any town has. And we're very fortunate, and I'm grateful for the job that they're doing. So Chief, please pass that along. I'm sure my colleagues agree with me. As far as anything else, I'll leave that for the chief's report. Thank you. Okay, next up is the Public Works Committee, Councilman Yingling.
No report.
Okay, we are getting through this meeting. Recreation and Parks Committee, Councilman Dayhoff.
We have a, we have an advisory board meeting scheduled for tomorrow. And I sent the agenda out to everyone. Everyone's always invited to those meetings. I think they're, I think it's an exciting group, and I'm really looking forward to the meeting. And I'm really looking forward to the, the group of folks that the mayor has put together. It's a lot of really exciting folks. So that meeting will take place tomorrow at, at six o'clock. But, but other than that, you know, the gnomes and the, the square bales, the minions were accepted extremely well. And I'm just really happy with all the work that the, the Wreckin' Parks folks are doing. It's, it's definitely one of the bright spots during the pandemic. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Dayhoff. And I agree, the, that there's gnomes are cool. They catch me off guard every once in a while. I'll be driving down Main Street. I'm like, what's that dude doing standing over there? Then I realize it's one of, I was at a light the other day. And I'm like, why's this guy give me mugging me through the window? I realized it was a gnome. But they are, they're very cool. Okay, so next up is the Technology Committee. And Council President Pecorero is absent as well, so we won't have a Technology Committee report. Okay, so next on the agenda are bids, and we have one bid this evening on the Diffendal parking lot retaining wall. And I'll go to Mr. Glass for that. Mr. Glass?
So I'm happy to do that, but you, you did skip over council comments and discussion if you wanted to do that first.
I did. Thank you for keeping me straight, Mr. Glass. You've been doing this, what, thirty-five, forty years now?
It's.
I, I appreciate it. So I missed that one, council comments and discussion. I promised Councilman Dayhoff I was not trying to blow past your comments and discussion, but I know you had a topic you wanted to bring up, so I'll turn the floor over to you.
I was just hoping Chief, have all the, have all the police officers gotten their, their shot? Because throughout the pandemic, they've been on the, the front line of everything. I think it's only appropriate that they, to get their vaccine as quickly as possible.
So the opportunity has existed for everybody who has chosen to get vaccinated to do so. We're keeping track of who has or has not so that we know moving into the future. But everybody has had the opportunity, and there's been enough appointments for anyone who has wanted to get vaccinated to do so.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Mr. President.
Sure thing. Any other council comments and discussion at this time? If not, I'll go ahead and move on now to bids. So, Mr. Glass, if you want to tell us about the Diffendal parking lot retaining wall, the floor is yours, sir.
Yes, sir. So the fiscal year twenty-one capital projects budget includes funding for the repair, the retaining wall that's located on the east side of the Diffendal parking lot. And just to recap, Diffendal Lot is the one that's between the library and the old firehouse there. So, and it is the wall that borders the firehouses, the one that is, has fallen into disrepair. So the project consists of installing soldier piles and precast concrete panels between the piles to back up and take the place of that existing failing gravity wall. For the older people in the audience, you may recall that was a building there at one point. That was our first parking garage. The garage was removed and, and the existing wall was, was left as a retaining wall, which is part of the reason that it's failed. Because, again, that was a gravity wall based on the building, which, without the weight of the building, then, then the wall suffers for that. And indeed, that's what's happened. So the request for bids was issued on October sixteenth, due on November twentieth. We got four bids. They ranged from two hundred forty-eight thousand, twenty-three dollars and sixteen cents to five hundred fifty-nine thousand, seven hundred sixty-four, twenty. The low bid was through, or from Keller Brothers Incorporated, and they're in Mount Airy, Maryland. Their price again was the two forty-eight oh twenty-three sixteen. We reviewed that and found it to be acceptable with regard to our needs. So again, the, the, the base bid provides for the installation of these bare precast retaining wall panels. So, you know, it looks like a, almost like an artist's palette, actually. And, and quite honestly, I'm somewhat concerned that, that these bare panels may attract some graffiti artists and the potential for tagging as well. But in the bid, we structured it such that there were some add alternates as well. So to, to take care of, potentially take care of that issue, one of the alternates is the addition of thin brick to, to, to these bare concrete wall panels. So it costs a little bit more. It will look like brick. The surrounding walls are brick as well. But I have to caution though as well that although it, it will have the, the same appearance as brick, it's not going to match because it'll be, the grout lines will be perfect in, in the thin brick on the, on the concrete panels where the hand-laid walls will not be. And so if the idea is to, you know, make it look completely uniform, it's, it will, will not do that. It will look like brick, but it's, it's not going to be the exact match. And the cost for that, that alternate is an additional twenty-four thousand, one hundred sixty dollars to, to have that add alternate. So, so what we did was we contacted, this is where Councilman Dayhoff was, was alluding to earlier. We contacted the Carroll Arts, Judy Morley, and, and talked with her about the potential of, of using that as maybe street art or a mural of some sort. At this point, I can't tell you because Judy has not yet gotten back to me. She needed to talk with her people that do that kind of work. She seemed very excited about it. And, and, and again, I believe that, that something can be worked out there. But, but at this point, I can't tell you that one hundred percent for sure. Part of the delay was, you know, because of the holidays and that kind of thing as well. But, but I know Ms. Morley is, is, is working on that, and I expect to hear something very soon. So, so we're really hoping that something like that could be worked out. But in the event that it couldn't, the thin brick alternative is, is probably where we should go with that. Again, I think that once, if we manage to do something with, with Carroll Arts, I think the, you know, the council should have opportunity to see, you know, in, in concept, at least, what they have in mind for that. But I, I, again, I feel like that's would be a really neat alternative as well. With regard to funding, the budget for the project is two hundred thirty thousand dollars. And as you can see, even on the base bid, we are under, because the low bid was two forty-eight. So supplemental funding will be needed. In, in any case, there are some other sunk costs that would be the engineering services during construction. And we have a potential for, once we start driving the, the soldier piles, we don't know what exactly what that's going to be until the, until the piling meets refusal. So, you know, we have base bid numbers on the length of pile, but that could change as well. And we would have an increasing cost for the soldier piles. So there are a couple of different alternatives here to find the difference in, in the, in funding. And, and unfortunately, there's some moving parts here with some other projects. But there is a potential that we could recover some money from a project on Sullivan Road. It was a dredging, ditch dredging project that we, that we covered with, it's already complete, but we did that out of, of operating funds. That also included some pipe work on Long Valley Road, which is not complete, but there was a hundred thousand dollars there. There's also a potential that, that that pipelining work on Long Valley Road would have to be real allocated for, out of next year as well. Because this, the big project that was unanticipated is a, an outfall at Center Street, a storm drain outfall, which is, is going to be a. which is, is going to be a fairly extensive and, and expensive repair. We didn't know that that was even underway, and we're in the process of getting numbers for that. So, so we have some ideas, and it might work out that, that we'd be able to fund these, the shortfall out of existing projects, but if not, at the same time, we may have to go to, to reserve funds as well. I, I won't know that at this point, because it's just too many moving parts with the other projects. Again, if we can do it with money out of the existing projects, clearly we'll do that. But if we're forced to, it would, additional money would have to come from the reserve fund. So, all that being said, at this point, we recommend that Mayor and Council accept the bid of Keller Brothers, Mount Airy, Maryland, execute the contract in a not-to-exceed amount of two seventy-two, one eighty-three, sixteen. And that would include that, the thin brick alternate as well. Then, of course, to authorize the mayor's execution of the, of the contract. So we'd be pleased to answer any questions if there are any.
Do we go ahead and get a motion on the table, and then we go ahead and discuss it? Do we have a motion to accept the bid? And if so, give us an amount. If not, we can discuss a little first, if we'd like to do that.
So moved.
Councilman Yingling?
I'll second that, not to exceed two seven, two hundred and seventy-two thousand.
On the not-to-exceed amount, Councilman Yingling? Okay.
That is correct.
And then you're seconding, Councilman Dayhoff? Okay.
Yes, sir.
So we have a motion on the table for the staff recommendation of the not-to-exceed amount of two seventy-two, one eighty-three, sixteen. And if I'm not mistaken, that includes the veneer brick or the thin brick as, in, in addition to the actual work that's going to take place, correct?
That's correct. Yes, sir.
Okay, so is there any discussion on this topic?
Mr. President?
Councilman Dayhoff?
And I guess we can look at, at a later point in time, some funding for the mural. I brought up the newspaper article from when we did the other mural in two thousand and two, and I had a number for us. And I, I don't recall the number at this point in time. And I, I think that is going to be a tricky project. Mr. Glass, if I'm not mistaken, that wall goes back to the eighteen hundreds. That's part of the palace, that's part of the palace livery stable wall that was back in the eighteen hundreds, and that was part of that famous fire in nineteen oh six. So you could, it, it could be interesting. Yeah, it could be real interesting. So we've needed to do this for a long time. I'm glad we're moving forward with it.
Any other comments? I, I have one. So I, I like to understand that the difference, well, I guess my question would be this. If we're going to paint a mural on the wall, why would we put the thin brick on it? Because you're not going to paint on top of the thin brick, correct?
That's correct. So
So that's, it's a, it's a twenty-four thousand dollar, I'm sorry. Yeah, wait a minute. It's, it's a, yeah, twenty, I think it's a twenty-four thousand dollar differential. If I did my math, well, actually spell it out in the, in the thing, it's twenty-four K for the thin brick.
That's right.
So Councilman Dayhoff, you mentioned that there would be cost to do a mural, but we're going to save twenty-four thousand dollars by not doing the thin brick.
That's correct.
So we certainly, you know, I guess in, in a sense would have that, some of that money to put towards it. It's still put, we're still eighteen thousand over budget, even without the thin brick or, or on top of it. So I just want to point that out, that it is, it is eighteen K over, as you mentioned. You know, do we have to make the decision on the thin brick today? Or is that something we could do at, at a later date as a change order?
So, so what we're looking for is, in the event that we have to go to the thin brick idea, that we have funding enough to let the contract in that amount. What I'm really hoping for is to work something out with Carol Arts and first. And if that's the case, we don't do the thin brick, just like you mentioned. And then the, the contract would, with Keller Brothers, would be the base contract. We would not have to add anything for the, for the, for the thin brick. In the event it went the other way, we would let it for the base contract, and it would be then, and add at a later time. They, they can do the contract. There's a lot of work that they can do before they get to the concrete panel stuff. So we don't have to make that decision today that it's going to be thin brick, but I'd like to have the funding available just in the event that it goes that way.
Any other additional comments or questions? I, I'll add one more quick one. I, you know, if we do decide to go the route of a mural, Councilman Dayhoff, no, actually, I think you said it, Mr. Glass, that, you know, you would, you would run that bias. I mean, I, I have all the confidence in the world the Art Council's going to pick something good and all, but it, it would be nice for us to get a chance to see it as opposed to walking by one day and seeing a mural up there, you know, before we had a chance to view it. So I, I would ask to make sure that we do get a chance to take a peek at it before it's, you know, finalized.
Sir, President?
Councilman Dayhoff?
When we did the, the mural that's in Locust Lane, it cost, it cost eight thousand dollars. If that gives you a point of reference.
How long ago was that?
That was in two thousand and two, I believe. I believe it was in that, it was in that range, the two thousand and two range.
Well, not only will it probably look really cool, it's going to probably save us some money. So hopefully, we can, we can go that route. All right, well, if we have, there's no other further questions or discussion, I'll go ahead and put the motion to a vote. All those in favor of approving the motion to allow the bid to move forward at the not-to-exceed amount of two seventy-two and change, say aye. Any opposed? No opposed? So the motion passes. Mr. Glass, you have your money. And hopefully you can get that mural squared away.
Thank you, sir.
Next up is ordinances and resolutions. We don't have any this evening. Then we'll move on to unfinished business, and I am not aware of any unfinished business. Is anyone else aware of any unfinished business that's still outstanding? Okay, hearing no unfinished business, we'll move on to new business, which, of which we have two items. The first order of new business is the approval of the Warner Construction Change Order Twenty-One Non-Compensatory Extension of Time. Mr. Glass, I'm assuming you're going to take this in Ms. Matthews' stead?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
Okay, floor is yours, sir.
So mainly due to issues with, with COVID, Warner has, and although the, the project has gone quite well, they're not going to meet their contractual deadline of January one. Clearly, it's past January one now, and we're not in the building. But again, this was largely due to, to issues with delivery of specialized components. The elevator is, is one that really turns into a, a day-to-day extension, day-for-day, I should say, extension of, of waiting to have that, those components complete. Also need to say that beyond the, the contract calls for beyond the substantial completion date, liquidated damages of, of seven hundred and fifty dollars per day. So, so, so again, I've mentioned the elevator. There were some other issues, delays with, with floor tiles. Those delays then created issues with delays of installation of plumbing fixtures and, and that kind of thing. So, but again, as, as a result, what Warner's looking for is, they don't want to be, they're not looking for any additional pay for, for these days. But they are looking for relief from that seven hundred and fifty dollars as, as per day liquidated damages as well. It also should be noted that, as you know, Gampor Nat GBA was, was hired to, to handle the administration of the contract, and that was a lump sum amount of forty-nine thousand, one hundred and seventy dollars. And basically, you pay off of that lump sum, depending on the completion of, of the work as the contract moves forward. So, and, and the GBA is not looking for any additional pay beyond that forty-nine, one seventy, which honestly, they, they certainly could ask for that, because they will do additional work beyond while we're waiting for the project completion to take place. Beyond that, as you know, the city hired GBA to do field inspection, and, and, and we will pick up additional costs there for this, for this extended time. And on the average, that's been about, due to the, the field service, that's been about seventy-five hundred dollars per month. So I, I think somewhere along that line is what you could expect. This is actually going to cost us to come out of our pocket. But so, so the impact to the project would extend the date of substantial completion to September, I'm sorry, February fourth, and, and result in thirty-four consecutive calendar days added, again, without the liquidated damages. So staff recommends that the city authorize, and this happens by change order. It's change order number twenty-one. But to execute that contract with Warner Construction. So that's pretty much where that is. There's, in the packet is a, a letter from GBA as well that, that recommends that approval of the change order as well. So I'll answer any questions if there are any.
So I'll go ahead and take the liberty of, of going first on this topic. It's about twenty-five thousand, twenty-six thousand dollars, if I'm not mistaken, that we would be able to charge, I guess, for lack of a better word, the contractor for being about thirty-five days, thirty-four days late on the project. So I think to have a clear picture, what, what we're being asked is to allow them to, we're being asked to waive that twenty-five, twenty-six thousand dollar fine, for lack of a better word. If I'm, if I'm understanding this correctly, right, Mr. Glass?
So, so it's really not a fine. Liquidated damages are, even to collect liquidated damages, you have to prove that you were damaged. How best would we be able to prove that we were damaged? This is a, an example, our lease in the existing building ends on March thirty-first. If we were required to extend our lease further, then that lease amount would be, we could demonstrate that that's how, what, what loss we had. So, you know, we could say that, that although it's not an extension of the lease, but we are continuing to pay rent in the existing building here at fifty-six. So we could, we could use that number as well, but
Yeah, I, I think that frankly, the bar to be able to say that we're damaged is probably low enough that just, just the time alone and our inability to move in would, would make it relatively easy for us to, to, to collect that money, frankly. But I, I guess for me, you know, this is unprecedented, what we're going through. No one could have anticipated this. I, I'm sure like everybody else, they're probably struggling with all kinds of things. Obviously, Grant, Grant Burnett is waiving their additional costs and expenses that they're going to incur. And for me, I'll weigh in. I, I guess as Council President, I'm, I'm, I'm a non-voter unless it's a tie, but I'm also, I think, able to weigh in, and I'm going to. Yeah, I, I think we should do it. I think we should go ahead and, and look, I'm, I'm a hawk, you know, I'm a budget hawk. I don't like giving up money or spending money when we don't have to. But I think in this circumstance, they've been a pretty good partner so far. I think by and large, overall, my understanding is that, you know, they're doing a good job. And I think it's the right thing to do. It's not money that, we're not taking money out of our pocket in terms of the twenty-five, twenty-six grand. We will take a little money out of our pocket, it sounds like, though, for some additional inspections. Is that, is that correct?
Yes, sir. That is correct. I think that would, and again, the average number per month is around seventy-five hundred bucks. So I, I, I think that's what you could expect.
Yeah, I, I don't love that part of it, obviously, because that's an actual hard cost versus just uncollected money. I, I'll go ahead and, 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 you know, quiet down at this point, give my colleagues an opportunity to weigh in on this. So who would like to be heard next? Mr. Mayor?
I agree with you. I, I think one thing we should keep in mind in projects this size and this, you know, they, they never go exactly as planned. That's why you plan to have some overages and things like that. And I know toward the end, as, you know, as we got, you know, and nearing the end here, it felt like we had change orders constantly, and I think that's pretty much just how that works. But when you look at, you know, change order costs and, and overages as a percentage of the project, I don't think we could have really asked for better, a better, you know, project, you know, better outcome. And, and that's all during a time when costs were high, supply chains were affected. I think even with this, everything went incredibly smooth. So I, I agree. I just, I just, you know, I know we have to, we should explain why we make decisions that, that cost the city twenty-five thousand dollars, and that, that's my reasoning for it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Anybody else?
Mr. President?
Councilman Dayhoff?
Yeah, I agree that we ought to go ahead and approve change order number twenty-one. Do you want a motion to that effect?
I think at this point, that would be appropriate. So if we want to go ahead and get a motion at this point, are you making that motion?
I'll make that a motion, that we, we go ahead with it. I think it's reasonable. If I may ask, well, we should get a second first.
I'll make a second. Councilwoman Gilbert has a second. Okay, Councilman Dayhoff?
Mr. Glass, you're, what, you're okay with this, right?
Yes, sir. I think it's reasonable. I think
I think it's reasonable. It's a very complex project. It's, it's a much older building. I think the change orders are well within fifteen percent. Wouldn't you say, Mr. Glass?
Oh, I think it's much less. I think it's in the, and I should be able to give you that exact number, but I, I believe it's seven percent, I think.
Yeah, fifteen percent's an, an industry standard that, that I used to use many years ago. So I mean, I, I, I'm willing to work with them. I, all reports are, we're going to get a great project, and I think, I think history's going to be really kind to us. I'm just as much a, a budget hawk as, as Mr. Kovachi, but I'm, I'm, I'm usually obsessed with return, and I think we're going to get really good return off of this.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Day, Councilman Dayhoff. Any other comments before we go ahead and bring it to a vote? If not, all those in favor of approving the change order signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it, and the change order is approved. Thank you. Okay, um, the second order of new business is approval of a contract for well number eight PFAS treatment study. Mr. Glass, it's your evening this evening.
Yeah, I know. I'm, lucky me, I guess, is the word. So as part of a statewide effort, the Maryland Department of the Environment has recently tested all of Westminster's drinking water sources for a newly regulated substance known as PFAS. PFAS, it's an acronym for per and polyfluoroalkyl substances. They are man-made and have been widely used in industries around the globe, including food packaging, household products, stain and water repellents for fabrics, Teflon, non-stick coatings, firefighting foams, and the list goes on and on. Unfortunately, these chemicals are very persistent and do not naturally break down very quickly in the environment. And for that reason, they're sometimes referred to as forever chemicals. And consequently, PFAS is found in drinking water all over the United States, unfortunately, in well number eight as well. So MBE tested, again, tested all of Westminster's water and found this, this contaminant in well number eight in excess of EPA's limit of seventy parts per trillion. That's twelve zeros. Call and consult consultation with the MBE, well, eight's been taken out of service upon confirmation of the test results, and of course, remains out of service until a treatment system to, to remove this substance is in place. We also need to know that well number eight is a major component in our, in our water system, and especially needed during the summer months when the demand is high and will have dry conditions. So accordingly, the city requires some engineering consulting services to determine the best and appropriate treatment for well number eight. And we have to take into account the, the expediency of the work and both capital and operating costs as well. The staff contacted GHD. The staff contacted GHD. I know you've heard that term before, they're an Australian company. They have worldwide offices, obviously, but we're fortunate enough to have one in in Bowie, Maryland. And what we were looking for was a proposal to achieve all these objectives that I've just have just gone over. But the reason we we went back to GHD is they have provided engineering services for actually the last two upgrades for this particular facility. So so they would have a rather robust background of you know, most existing or or most recent drawings and and existing idiosyncrasies of that process. So that familiarity should be a benefit to the project in in both financial terms and in timely completion as well. So for those reasons, the customary procurement processes were not pursued at this time. The city code recognizes these unique circumstances in the well eight situation and and allow the mayor and council to authorize sole source procurement. We believe that that procurement of engineering consulting services for this particular treatment study constitutes such a circumstance. So the proposal that we did get from GHD provides for a treatability study for the well number eight facility to determine the most cost effective and expedient way to bring a facility into compliance. And this is part of the reason that we we like to work with with GHD. They are not just good engineers, but they are are leaders as well in the in the industry. But they advised of a new iron exchange media that targets has specific targeting for this PFAS chemicals as well as other anions. The well number eight already has iron exchange treatment units. We use it for nitrate removal right now. But there is a potential that these units could be modified with this new media and accomplish both the PFAS and nitrate reduction. So if, and again, if this is successful, it would allow us to use well number eight, maybe at a reduced rate, but we'd still get to use it. You know, throughout the the summertime when we will need it sorely need it. But or even longer, that we could use it until a potential of a more lengthy design and construction would take place if we do find that we have to go to GAC or that's granular activated carbon, because we know that's what I thought we would have to do anyway. I was, I have to admit that I was unaware of this this new iron exchange media that that GHD advised me on. And it may turn out that that long term, that it would be cheaper to go with the the GAC alternative, although it's going to take a longer time for design and 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 construction, because we'll have to have additional property at the treatment site, and we'll have to have a larger building and and all that kind of thing. So that's a a much longer term solution, I think, although it may turn, could turn out to be the the least expensive when it comes to to operating cost. So a part of the scope that the GHD proposed will provide the city with estimates as well for budgetary purposes for the design and construction of this GAC, if if it's determined that we have to go that way. But again, if we do have to do that, and we don't, don't go with the iron exchange process, then this well would very likely be out of service through the summer months of twenty twenty one and and maybe the following summer as well, depending on the extent of the the construction for the for the larger units. The other thing that's I think is important to note is that on the regulations for PFAS are under review with with regard to what levels are are safer or safest for human consumption as well as disposal. So you can catch the stuff in the water, but then you have to dispose of it at some point, and that could be looked at as a hazardous waste at some time in the future as well. Again, that's that's being looked at. It's not to say that that's going to be the case right now, but the regulations continue to evolve with regard to to PFAS. So as you can imagine, the fiscal year twenty twenty one budget didn't anticipate anything related to PFAS because we didn't know that it was even there. So there was no indication that the budget's adoption, that that there would be any any need for any work at all to well number eight. Accordingly, there's nothing in the budget for it. What we can say is we have fifty thousand dollars in operating for engineering studies in the in the water plant budget. So even at that point, we're still in the twenty five or seven thousand dollar shortfall, but we're hoping that we can pick that up through some other capital projects that maybe we can save someone or or wouldn't be completed till the end of the of the fiscal year. If that's not the case, then we'd have to go to the water fund reserves for that additional difference. But so at this point, the staff would recommend that mayor and council approve the sole source procurement for the engineering services for at well eight for PFAS treatment study. And we'd accept that proposal of GHD in the amount of, then there's a typo there that says seventy five, five hundred. It's actually seventy seven, five hundred. So that should be, if you look back in the in the packet, it would in our actual proposal, that number seventy seven, five hundred exists. So that was a unfortunately, a typo that I'll take responsibility for. And I'm pleased to answer any questions that you may have.
Mr. President?
Go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
I don't want any questions, but I mean, obviously, this is something that we we have to do. There's no, only there's really a choice here. And I know this is a a new substance people are testing for. In fact, in my network of other mayors, we're, I mean, we're not the only one dealing with this right now. A lot of people are are finding this in this substance. From my understanding, I know it comes from lots of places, but the biggest corporate seem to be anywhere. There's, you know, fire departments or train facilities are using like a foam. Airports are another place where where this is coming from. So this is something that I think in, I would say, fairly recently on like EPA's radar. And I mean, that's in, it's in government terms, I don't know how long that's been, but it's, you know, everything, all the, you know, once this this came about, I did a lot of research. And I I think the reality is they don't really know what it does, if it does anything, but it's, they want to get ahead of it. And there's some some idea that it might be a carcinogen. So but there's just no, there's really no option for us here, I think we do it. And and I've, you know, I've already talked with the, you know, a couple of commissioners about this. And I know our staff's talked to the county because I think this well doesn't just serve city residents. It serves some outside of the city as well. So but, you know, it's a, I'm happy that it's, there's only one well, one place it was coming from, because my understanding is that this is something that a lot of people are dealing with right now. Because it's it's new, that everyone's testing for it now. It's like the first time people are, a lot of people are in recent years or recent months, it's the first time people have tested for it. So it's not just us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any other comments?
Mr. President, how about we get a motion on the on the table?
Okay, that that's fine, if you want to do that, if you want to go ahead and make a motion.
I'll I'll make that motion that we accept the a sole source procurement in the amount of seventy seven thousand, five hundred to do the the study with with this particular consulting firm, GHD, because of their familiarity with the project and because of the timeliness of it.
I'll second that.
And we have a second from Mrs. Gilbert. Okay, any any additional discussion?
I I have a couple of questions.
Ms. Gilbert, go ahead.
So since since I know are the the training facility is nearby this well, not to say that that's definitely where all the particles have come from. Is there any any talk or of at least trying to to save some of those chemicals when we're using the facility to try to prevent it from going into our water source? Is that even a possibility?
So in the United States, they have, although it's it's a change, the actual PFAS has been, has discontinued use for, it's been a few years now. But again, because earlier on, I explained that they're referred to as forever chemicals. We have to live with what has occurred. But so if you if you want those PFAS chemicals to be manufactured, you have to go outside the United States now in order for that to occur. So but so there are replacement chemicals for it, much like Freon was changed out some years ago. And and I think that's their understudy as well, to be for sure that they're or how safe they are to use as well. So so I I think the issues that we're dealing with at well number eight now are a result from years gone by.
Okay, so my other question was, I know you were you were talking about the the PFAS that is accumulated. What what do we do with what gets accumulated now? What happens to to what we collect?
So so there are, so so we don't remove it in that facility at all right now. But if we change to this iron exchange, this particular iron exchange material, then then we would. So one of two things could happen. It could either regenerate on site or depending upon the 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 media, then it would be completely removed, collected, and then it would it would go to a burn facility and 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 have to be replaced with new media then. So that's that's another approach then. So generally, it's a waste of energy facility, something that burns really, really hot. And and it's it's used as a as a fuel source then at that point.
Okay, all right. I I didn't know if any of it was reusable, that that someone else could could.
Any other additional comments? I'll I'll make one if there isn't. So a little bit echoing Ms. Gilbert's comments in terms of the facility, the the fire training facility, that that I I I think there's, like she said, I don't, I don't, I don't know that there's absolute concrete evidence that this PFAS, the stuff came from from the training facility, but it's it's probably a good possibility, given the location of the well, given location of what the chemicals are. You know, you you had mentioned, Mr. Mayor, that there were some discussions with the commissioners in terms of, you know, the fact that the well does service folks outside of of the city. Obviously, the fire training services folks inside the city as well. And and if, in fact, it is an outcropping of that, certainly, we probably bear some responsibility. But it also services the entire county. So if, in fact, that facility is potentially part of the reason or all of the reason that these these this stuff is in that well. Personally, I'd like to see maybe if we can get the county to pony up a little bit here to help us get this built. I I suspect if we're talking about seventy five thousand dollars for engineering, we're probably talking about a heck of a lot more for the solution to the problem. Do you have a sense, Mr. Glass, what kind of money we're talking about here? Are we talking hundreds of thousands of dollars, millions of dollars? What are we looking at? Do you have any idea?
So so that's that's part of what the study is going to tell us is is, first of all, if we do have to go to do anything further than the iron exchange change out. If we do, it's certainly going to be in the hundreds of thousands of dollars. So the building that we have right now won't be large enough to to contain these other vessels that we have to have for granular activated carbon. We have to acquire property in order to make the building larger. So, you know, you can just see the dollar signs going up. I don't think it would be a million dollars, but I think it would probably be. And again, we're going by my Nostradamus mustache here, but I would say somewhere close to those five hundred thousand if I was going to make an educated guess.
Well, it's good to know, and you know, I I know that we'll have some future discussions, and I I'm I'm sure they'll be more than happy to help in any way that they can. They always have been, we have a good relationship with them. So I just want to make sure that we're considering that. Any other comments?
Yeah, Mr. President.
Questions before we move forward, want to vote?
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
I I just, I don't know if we should discuss too much, you know, many more details in terms of like what it could be. We know there's a fire, you know, training facility there, and it's a likely culprit, but we don't know that for sure. I've been talking to a couple of commissioners, and they were very supportive about whatever we needed in terms of messaging, help, in terms of, you know, I mean, you know, I I know that our Department of Public Works has it has it handled, but they offered any help that we need, and they've been very supportive. At that time, we didn't have any information in terms of cost. And right now, we don't have concrete information of what it's going to cost. So I think we should get that together, because when I talk to them, I'd like, you know, I don't want to go to them and ask for help and then go back, and then go back. I think we should go and with a plan and have them and just sit down at the table and say, how can we work together to get this done? But that, you know, that's that's kind of, at the time, when I talked to them, we we knew less than we do now in terms of cost, and we still don't know what we really need to know before we have that serious discussion about how it's going to be handled.
Makes a lot of sense to me, Mr. Mayor. Any other comments? If not, we'll go ahead and move to a vote. All those in favor of approving the bid for seventy seven, five, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it, and the bid is approved. Thank you, Mr. Glass.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Okay, we'll go ahead now and move on to departmental reports. As I mentioned earlier, Ms. Matthews is unable to attend the meeting this evening. So I'll go ahead and just call the department heads. This may be not in the same order that Ms. Matthews does it. But I'll start off with Councilman Dayhoff. Did you have anything from the fire department?
Not at this time, Mr. President, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next up, and we've heard from him quite a bit this evening already, Mr. Glass, do you have anything in addition?
Yes, sir, I'll try to make it as brief as possible. They we we did have a water main break. It started, well, I was alerted at twelve thirty this afternoon, and it was on Burning Tree between to to Home Farm and and Long Valley. The repair went pretty quickly, but unfortunately, when we were opening valves back up again to to recharge the system, one of the valves that had that we had to close in order to to make the effect the first repair, that it it was damaged and 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 needed to be repaired. So I'm happy to report that as of six forty five, the the water was turned back on again. It's, I I guess somewhat unfortunate that after the first repair, we had to shut things back down again to make the second repair at a different location, but that's the way the cookie crumbles sometimes. So but everybody's got water now, and hopefully, we're we're back in order. That's all I have.
And of course, none of that stuff just sits up there nicely above ground where you can just access it and fix it. You got to dig everything up to get to it, right, Mr. Glass?
One hundred percent.
Fantastic. Well, thank you, and please thank your staff for a job well done. It's they they do a fantastic job of of getting it. And it's one of those things that people, yeah, you turn the spigot on, you expect it to work, you flush the toilet, you expect it to disappear, and you forget about all the things that have to happen every day in order to make that happen. So thanks again, and please thank the staff.
Yes, sir, I'll do that, thank you.
Okay, so next up, we'll go to Rexon Parks, Ms. Scruber.
Hi, good evening. A couple of updates for you tonight. First, I'd like to start off with an update on the Wakefield Valley Park master planning process. As you are aware, the first public meeting was scheduled for December sixteenth, and Mother Nature threw some challenges our way with proceeding with our plan to have an in-person public input meeting. But thanks to the efforts of the Community Media Center, we were able to still proceed with that meeting one hundred percent virtual. And we had an astounding response on Facebook. Over one thousand, one hundred people viewed the meeting on Facebook alone. And the landing page that was created on the city's website to simply announce the meeting received seven hundred and thirteen views during the month of December. So I was concerned that our outreach efforts would be thwarted by the snow, but I was happy to see the engagement, and we were pleased to receive plethora of emails with citizens detailing input for the plan itself. The next public input meeting is scheduled for January twenty seventh. We are going to go back to our original plan and hope to have two seedings, one at six and one at seven fifteen at the Carroll Arts Center with an interactive public component at the conclusion of each seeding. Basically, this second opportunity on the twenty seventh will basically incorporate all of the feedback that we received from the first public meeting. And this iteration This iteration of the plan will include. Not only suggestions from the public, but focused areas of activity. So for instance. Right now, the consulting team is looking at. A proximity study. So you're not going to put a playground that is a mile walk from the parking lot. So those types of activities and opportunities are being assessed and assigned. And hopefully presented during this next iteration of the master plan. I do anticipate having documents for you to review sometime the week of. Well, sometime between January 20th and January 22nd in anticipation of the meeting on the 27th. Additionally, the Recreation and Parks Department is making progress on our plans for pool renovations. Currently, bid specs are being written and I have to say that at this point, timing indicates it would be most beneficial. To open the municipal pool as it is this season for 2021. And hold off on beginning construction until the conclusion of the 2021 pool season. So we're not even out to bid yet. We don't have bid specifications completely written. There are a lot of details. There are some geotechnical studies that will need to be accomplished. In order to put this project out to bid and timing really seems to make sense. To make sure that we're putting a sound project out to bid and holding construction until after we get a pool season in for 2021. Additionally, we have made progress out at the Tohoma Farm Boulder Park. All of the artificial climbing boulders have been removed and the corresponding footers, thanks to the Herculean efforts of our streets department. So that site is almost prepped and ready to receive the new playground equipment that is grant funded. One of the. Items that is left. We're actually waiting for drier soil right now for the site to be returned to level and graded. And I did get shipping confirmation that the new equipment is going to be shipped to us on March 5th. So. We will have a corresponding install date. After March 5th. And lastly, things are moving along with the historic structures assessment on the Durbin House. We had our kickoff meeting with the consultants on Thursday, January 7th. They have already been out to the site to photograph in detail and catalog some of the architectural features of the house. And I have also put the consultants in touch with one of the. Durbin family descendants. Her name is Pam Durbin and they have been corresponding. So. Most of the research behind that project is being conducted now. And when we have better opportunities for warmer weather and maybe a little bit longer. Days where we have daylight a little bit longer than we do right now, they'll be doing more onsite. Visits and cataloging of the property. That concludes my report unless there are questions.
Mr. President.
Go ahead, Councilwoman Gilbert.
Ms. Gruber, is there any way we could have a coming soon sign or something going up by Boulder Park? I know there's been some questions out there about what's going on. Is that a possibility? I don't. I'm just asking.
I can't see why we wouldn't be able to post. A sign out there that simply states we are prepping the site for. A new play opportunity in the community.
I mean, we have plenty of signs that, you know, with the COVID warning, that was just pretty simple and easy. I'm just thinking that might be a nice way to. That people know something's coming soon and and wonder what's going on.
Yeah, absolutely.
Any other questions or comments from Ms. Gruber? Councilman Dayhoff?
Yeah, that that was my that was my question. Maybe we could put up a sign, Ms. Gruber, if it's okay with you. Maybe with a picture of what's coming because I'm really excited about what's what's coming. There and I I think that'd be a good thing. Because we're we're getting a lot of questions about it.
Yeah, I'm not quite the pro that Greg is.
You've done a great job.
Thank you, Mrs. Gruber. Okay, and next up would be IT, Mr. Davidson.
Good afternoon. Just like to report that on January 18th, 19th and 20th, we'll be taking and moving the phones to the new servers. Eighteenth will be a prep work. It's a holiday. We'll do all the prep work while employees are off, but the 19th will actually do the move. The system over to the servers. There will be some outages, wrong outages during that time. And the 20th will just be followed for any errors or issues we have. That's all I have to report tonight. Any questions?
If there are no questions, thank you very much, Mr. Davidson. Next up is going to be finance, Ms. Colton.
Yes, good evening. I just have a brief report. We're beginning the wonderful and. Most interesting time of the year, the the budget season. So worksheets have gone out to all the department heads and we're going to start compiling that information at the end of the month. And getting into the the thick of that that process. Other than that, it's been business as usual throughout the Christmas season and nothing of note to report. Thank you.
I I love that background. Maybe you can adjust it. Maybe you can adjust it so your head covers up the tax. That 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 dirty word right there.
That would be very.
Yeah, exactly.
Unfortunately, that dirty word provides our revenues, so.
That is a very good point. Well, thank you very much and have a nice evening.
You as well. Thank you.
So next up is gonna be Public Safety Chief.
Good evening again. So for our departmental report, we have currently two sworn officer vacancies. We just hired a lateral police officer. His name is. David Tatouska. He starts on the 19th and we're really excited to get him on board. He interviewed really well. We have a new property management specialist, Will Park, started last week. So he's in the training process down in our property and evidence room. We're preparing to implement our new dispatcher schedule. The new schedule will provide us having dispatch two dispatchers during each shift. And also a supervisor during most of the shifts, seven days a week. We are like everybody else in the nation transitioning from the uniform crime recording process. To a national incident based reporting system. So this involves a tweak to our reporting. For the officers and investigators and then as far as our administrative staff compiling data that we forward up through the state to the FBI. About crime and crime trends. So we're. Completing that process. We've had, as we typically do, a few sprees of thefts from vehicles. Which we want to remind everybody is a crime of opportunity. Most of our reported thefts are from unlocked vehicles. We do have a suspect identified and we're investigating. We've also conducted several crime prevention initiatives. To include social media and foot patrols with flyer distributions. So it's very important to both lock your vehicle and secure valuables out of sight. In 2021, we plan to boost our community policing and community oriented policing initiatives. Hopefully, we'll have a break from the pandemic that'll allow us to. Implement some of these. Several of our recent initiatives. Are that we have increased our social media outreach and interaction with the community. We've continued our participation at special events at the Boys and Girls Club. Our deputy chief participated in a community cleanup this past weekend. And we have additional plans for some significant initiatives in the works for community engagement in 2021. And that's all I have for my report unless there are any questions.
Anyone have any questions for the chief? All right. Thank you, chief. Have a nice evening. And last but not least is planning. Mr. Depot.
Good evening, everyone. Not much to report. We had a border zone and appeals meeting. The case was continued. To the following month. We had nothing scheduled for planning commission or the Historic District Commission. I do think we will have a application before the planning commission next month. And the next mayor and common council meeting, I'll have more information on that one. And the Clark Clark Farm itself, I know that's an interesting topic that. Is possibly moving to next month, but most likely. In March, we'll be looking at that application.
All right, anyone have any questions for Mr. Depot? Okay, thank you, Mr. Depot. Have a good evening. Okay, last last item of business on the agenda is citizens' comments. We don't have any citizens' comments this evening. However, if you have a comment. Please submit that comment to Shannon Viskosky, our city clerk at comments@westgov.com. If you would like your comments to be submitted as part of the record, please provide your full name and address. The council president will read the submitted comments that include the required information during the meeting and they will be reflected in the meeting minutes. And if there is no additional business, then I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you, everyone, and I hope you all have a fantastic week.